All right, well, okay, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call to order the joint meeting of the Urbendale City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I asked John to take role call, please.
Sure. Kroll?
Here.
Bernie?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Carberry Montgomery?
Here.
Ober?
Here.
Flipped to my next page, sorry. Galante? No. Smith? Nicholas?
Here.
Howell?
Here.
Righty? Ralston Hansen?
Here.
Hatfield is coming. Van Huglen?
Here.
And Rothler. That's all, thank you.
All right, thanks, John. Uh, if you can please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just thought somebody was gonna trip.
Urbendale's a national leader and character counts endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Conducting tonight's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. All right, uh... I had to choose to approve the agenda, I don't think we need to take a formal... Should we go ahead, you want to join me? Okay, I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve our agenda then.
So, second.
Wait a minute, who moved it? There's like the... By Blake, second by Carberry Montgomery. Any further discussion? Uh, if not, I'll ask for role call, please.
Yes.
Nick Kirby?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Ober?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Howell?
Yep.
Ralston Hansen? And Van Huglen?
Yes.
All right. We have one agenda item on our, uh, meeting agenda for tonight, and that is to discuss the comprehensive plan and have the workshop. And I'm gonna kick us off by introducing Brandon Nolan from House Levine. So, Brandon, the floor is yours to start us off.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, nice to meet you all, uh, happy to be here. Um, so, again, a comprehensive plan workshop, we're kicking things off. We've been here, uh, starting today, we'll be here through Friday to, to get this process started. Uh, really at the very front end of a, about a year and three-month process. So, um, thanks for participating in our workshop tonight in advance. Um, I'll advance here. Um, so, we'll talk about kind of what the project is, what a comprehensive plan is. Uh, most of our time will be dedicated to a workshop exercise, and we'll talk a little bit about some immediate next steps in the process. So, the project team, uh, Brandon Nolan, Senior Project Manager with House Levine Associates. Uh, we are the lead consultant, working with you all and city staff to develop the comprehensive plan. Uh, we've also got HDR on our team that's, um, locally based, knows anything and everything about infrastructure and transportation. We've got, uh, Joe Spradling here joining us, as well as, uh, Daniel C. from House Levine. Uh, we're kind of the core team working on this initiative. We also have a couple other staff in town currently driving around in the rain taking photos, so... Tomorrow's supposed to be very nice though, we'll get some, some better photos tomorrow. Just a quick intro about who House Levine is. Uh, we're a planning, design, and economics, urban planning and design firm based in Chicago. Um, we do work throughout the country, uh, predominantly in the Midwest. Um, comprehensive plans are, are bread and butter, um, although we've worked on over four hundred and fifty planning studies. Uh, over two hundred of those have been comprehensive plans. Um, and we really pride ourselves on, um, innovation, so we're looking to always use kind of the most cutting-edge tools we can and, and kind of perform our analyses and undertaking these efforts, so, um, looking forward to continuing that with you all. Um, we've been recognized throughout the country for, um, outreach and innovation in a variety of plans we've, uh, completed, including here in Iowa. Um, and, uh, again, comprehensive plans are one of our core aspects of our business. And, uh, several in Iowa we've completed, uh, Sioux City, Marion, Fort Dodge, Corville, Council Bluffs. Um, so, again, work throughout the country, trying to bring that national expertise to bear here, uh, for Urbendale, uh, and looking forward to working with you all. So, what is a comprehensive plan? Um, and I've got a couple slides to go through, but happy to answer any and all questions you all have. Uh, really what we're embarking on in this fifteen-month process is creating a foundation for decision-making. It's the solid ground that gives council and planning commission the kind of the solid kind of footing you need to, to support your decisions moving forward. It's a roadmap for the next ten to twenty years. Your last comprehensive plan is done in two thousand and three, so it's definitely time to, to do a whole kind of wholesale rewrite and refresh of, of what's in your comprehensive plan. So, um, that's what we're, we're setting out to do. Um, the comprehensive plan is a policy guide, and it's gonna cover a broad range of topics. We're really trying to improve quality of life in Urbendale, so that means we need to look at housing, economic development, transportation, infrastructure, parks and recs. So, we'll be looking at kind of all aspects of quality of life as it relates to, to Urbendale, and, and really how do we kind of lay out that foundation moving forward? How do we articulate local aspirations, uh, for what we want to achieve in each of those aspects of quality of life? Um, that's what the comprehensive plan's gonna do, is really kind of set that common vision for the community. Um, it's not regulatory, this is a policy guide, so, um, it by itself does not have the teeth to make things happen, but it will set the table and create the vision that you can all kind of row in the same direction and adjust regulations, create the incentives, do the things you need to do to get there. So, uh, oftentimes, a lot of communities work in, uh, the comprehensive plan is followed up by updates to your zoning regulations, for example. So, the, the regulations that go with this vision, um, will kind of follow this, this process. And so, why is it important? Again, that common community vision, um, really being used as a tool to attract and guide potential investors and, and, and people who wanna uh, look at the Des Moines region and where to locate, um, this really lays it out there and explains why you should, should be in Urbendale and the, the community you're trying to create. They'll aid in review of the development process, again, and proposed development. So, for the planning commission, this is a key tool and something you can lean on to say, this is why we're, we're recommending a project or not recommending a project. Um, it's a coordinated playbook for not just, uh, committees and, and boards and commissions, but also for departments and partner agencies. So, um, it's not just city departments, but it's also those outside partners. You can all look at the, the comprehensive plan as that playbook to, to go by. And kind of, last but definitely not least, and this is, is looking at grant funding. Um, a lot of times when you're applying for that free money, uh, there's two key questions you need to be able to answer yes to, and is A, do you have a comprehensive plan? And B, is that project that you want money for in that plan? And so, this document will be a key to kind of unlocking a lot of those, those grants and, and funding opportunities that are out there. Um, because ideally, a lot of the forward-thinking innovative things you wanna do will be included in this plan as actions you wanna look to, to fund in the future. Um, and along with that, that means coordinating your miscellaneous capital needs, aligning your regulations and policies. Again, providing that, that uniting vision, that North Star that everyone can apply to and adhere to, uh, to really achieve kind of a better quality of life in Urbendale down the line. So, that's kind of what a comprehensive plan is in a, in a nutshell. And, and I've got some slides that kind of walk through the planning process and what we're gonna be doing over the next fifteen months. But, I guess, any questions about what the comprehensive plan is or how it can be used by you all, uh, moving forward? All right. So, you all have a, a scope and a kind of a fancy multicolored timeline, uh, in your packets. Um, the timeline on the back page, uh, is kind of a cheat sheet that shows every step in our, our scope of work and what we're looking to do over the next fifteen months. Um, the contract scope that goes in front of that is, is kind of the more detailed, uh, pieces of it. So, I'm happy to answer any questions we have about that detail, but otherwise, I'll just be kind of walking you through the, the overall process that's on that back page, again, as your cheat sheet for the, the scope of work. Um, like I said, we're looking to do, uh, kind of create this comprehensive plan in about fifteen months' time. Um, we're really in about month two of this process, even though this is our first day here, kind of boots on the ground. We've been working with staff over the last, uh, several weeks, last couple of months to really, um, you know, pull data sources down, look at existing plans, um, work with staff to identify key issues. Um, so, we're at the very front of this process, um, that's really designed to answer three key questions. And, and this planning process can apply to anything, comprehensive plans, uh, your daughter's wedding. Um, it's, it's really three key questions, right? It's, it's where do we, where are we at today? Where do we wanna go, and how do we get there? Uh, being consultants, we split that up into about nine steps, but really, we're answering three key questions. So, step one is, is where are we at today? And that's really kind of the first three phases in this planning process, the kickoff, the initiation, the engagement, and existing conditions analysis. Um, so, we've been working with staff, like I said, uh, we've really kind of mostly completed the project initiation phase with this visit. Um, in addition to this trip where we're, uh, doing key person interviews, having our staff workshops, meeting with you all. We have a community workshop tomorrow night. Um, that's that community engagement listening phase, where we're really trying to document, what are the issues that you all care about? What does Urbendale think is important to, to look into as far as the planning process? Um, so, we're gonna come, couple that engagement, that listening, with some additional analysis to look at, um, current zoning, current land use, kind of on-the-ground observations we're seeing about some of the issues you're talking to us about. Uh, like I said, we've got a team out there documenting and drive around every block, looking at kind of some of the key issues and assets we see in the field. So, um, combining all of that analysis, along with HDR's expertise when it comes to transportation, infrastructure, really to document existing additions and, and community, um, priorities based on engagement. So, that all gets compiled together into an existing additions memorandum that we'll provide in a few months, um, that answers that question, where are we at today? What's the current status of Urbendale? What's that snapshot? And then we move on to answering that second question, where do we wanna go? Um, we know where point A is, where's point B? So, um, after we create the, the existing additions report, which we'll review with this group again, uh, we'll then host another round of engagement, this time dedicated really to looking at more detailed, um, sub-areas. We're gonna be looking in more detail at downtown, as well, as well as other parts of the Douglas Corridor, and then up to, to Plum and north, and looking at that area of the community as well. So, those are three kind of previously identified sub-areas we're looking to, to find in more detail. Um, we'll combine that, we're kind of since, along with, um, a vision statement and kind of forward-looking goals and objectives that really outline kind of where do we wanna go? What's that end game that we're looking towards? And so, the next visit, after we review existing additions, the following visit would be to review that framework. So, we'll develop and outline basically of the plan. This is the vision we're trying to achieve, these are the recommendations we're going to be fleshing out over the next several months. Does this group agree with this direction that we're headed? Um, so, there'll be a couple of different kind of green light moments along the process, where this group's input is gonna be key to that process. And that, that visit, um, and I'm, I've jumped ahead a little bit, but we're in kind of four E in this Gantt chart, kind of middle of the road in green, step four. Um, that's gonna be a very kind of influential meeting for this process, where we get to kind of say, everything we've learned about the community, everything we've heard, this is our recommendation about where we think the, the community wants to go and how to get there. These are the recommendations we want to include in the plan, do you agree, yes or no? Um, not necessarily to the actual end recommendations, but to the things that we wanna flesh out. Like, we think you need to do this X, Y, or Z, do you agree with that kind of direction? We're gonna be using that X several months to give you more detail and, and really kind of work through this plan with you. So, we have that meeting, we have the, the sub-area workshops, and, and really those two tasks, task four and five, um, provide that, that vision, that where do we wanna go, uh, statement. Uh, and then the last question, how do we get there? That's where our expertise comes into play, that's where HDR's expertise comes into play, um, where we get to say, we know you wanna get from point A to point B, these are the strategies and steps you need to take to get there, and, and we will compile everything, we'll create the sub-area plans, we'll create, uh, the various kind of plan elements, like a, a housing framework, an economic development framework, transportation infrastructure framework. Um, all those components get cobbled together and housed under that comprehensive plan umbrella. And that document is what will come to you all to vet, and then we'll also be vetting with the community as part of an open house series that we'd host towards the end of this process. So, um, all in all, again, about fifteen months, we're in month two of that process. Um, and, um, really looking forward to getting to know the community better with this trip. Um, and you'll see us again in a few months to review the existing additions report, um, and, and kind of have a check-in about what we've learned about the community and what we think the key, key issues are that really need to be kind of sussed out in this planning process. So, um, again, covered a lot of ground in, in just a couple minutes here, but please let me know if you have any questions about the process we're kind of embarking on with this, this, this trip and, and kind of where we're headed.
Could you clarify how many, uh, I mean, not that it's a huge deal, but how many visits and what, and at what point those are? You said you'd be back in a couple months.
Sure. Uh, yeah, so we have kind of key, key visit points every two to three months, really. So, um, the, uh, existing additions review, uh, will be happening, uh, in about three to four months, depending on progress. Then we'll be back a couple months later to go over that framework plan and conduct the sub-area visioning. Um, after that, about three months later, would be to go over the framework with you all and, and, um, kind of work through the open houses for those draft sub-area plans. Two months after that, we would have the draft plan for review, two months after that's the formal adoption. So, it's every, every two to three months with this group for the next year and a couple months.
Thank you.
I guess, since it's a longer-term project, do cities ever start putting projects on hold, waiting for your answers of stuff?
Um, sometimes, but not usually. I mean, I, I, we understand there's a lot of asks being made of the city at all times, so we never recommend you, you do it kind of full stop, don't do anything until we finish this, 'cause we know it's a year-and-a-half process. Um, you know, oftentimes, there might be some key projects where you're like, no, we really wanna hear what the community had to say about X, Y, or Z, so we're gonna put this on pause for a couple of months until we get that existing conditions report. Um, but I, yeah, I would say that outreach summary and existing conditions report we'll deliver in, in a couple, two to three months is really gonna be informative, I think, for a lot of reasons. And it doesn't necessarily mean you've got fully crafted policy in place at that point, but you'll, you'll have a lot of knowledge you can lean on. Um, but yeah, we, communities don't typically kind of stop things from happening, yeah. Any other questions? All right. So, now the fun part, you guys ready? I get to stop talking, you get to start talking. Um, so, we're gonna walk through a workshop exercise, do you have the sheets? Uh, Daniel is gonna hand out, uh, some questionnaires, um, which we'll, we'll be collecting these at the end of, uh, the workshop, so, uh, try to write as allegedly as possible. Um, I'm one of many lefties in this room, I understand, so I understand your pain, but, uh, try to help me out. And, uh, we're just gonna walk through this exercise. Uh, the first one, we'll give you a couple of minutes to fill out, but after that, it'll go a bit quicker. Um, and what we're gonna do is have you answer just question one, and only question one. Don't move on to question two, pencils down after question one. I'll say that again in a couple of minutes. But, uh, really, we just kinda wanna work through kind of your responses, have a discussion, and then we can kind of use question two to prioritize kind of what we've heard in that discussion. So, uh, question one is, identify five issues or concerns confronting the Urbendale community. So, those kind of top issues and priorities, you wanna see, um, kind of reviewed as part of this planning process, and, and really help us kind of, again, coordinate and, and, and help us know where to maybe emphasize the use of our time and, and, and going through this process. So, five items, they can just be bulleted phrases, um, and we'll give you a couple of minutes to answer that. Do you have some background music for the YouTube stream? No. I could beatbox a little. I don't know. Still see a couple pens moving. Writing too much. I can't do it. Hmm, I turned.
Cause you're wearing shorts. Of course you are. Welcome home. At least it's not snowing. That was a couple days ago.
I don't like this. Too verbose. If you can't come up with five, it's okay, we'll settle for three, but... Nice, nice, baby. So... So, now what we're gonna do is we're gonna kind of go around the horn, and we're gonna develop a comprehensive list based on what you guys have in your sheets. Uh, when I get to you, give us the kind of the first item on your list. If that item has already been said, move on to the second item. Uh, if I get to you and all of your items have been said, just say you're good, but kind of just going along. We'll build one comprehensive list with no repeats, is the idea. And then we'll use question two to kind of get at some of those commonalities, so... Uh, Daniel's gonna write down kind of shorthand versions of what you say. Uh, if you don't think what we put up there represents what you had in mind, let us know, but, um, we'll also be using your sheets to help capture some of the, the nuances too. So, um, we're gonna go ahead and start here, and we'll, we'll go around the horn, so...
Uh, commercial residential valuation split.
Commercial residential valuation split.
And, yeah, so we've, we've got, we're just, what, seventy-thirty residential to commercial value split for property tax base?
And so, the question is, should that be tipping more to commercial?
Fifty-fifty is, what we're told is the good number.
All right.
But we're not there.
Gotcha, all right. All right.
Oh, we're just doing one at a time, I thought we were doing...
Yep, just one at a time.
Oh, all right, uh, so I guess, uh, stormwater sewer management, probably a big one that... Well, it's, no, no order.
Stormwater slash sewer management.
Do you wanna read my list for me, Adam?
Sure. I can pick number one on your list for you.
All right. Don't know how to do this in like one sentence. Affordable housing stock for all incomes. That's great. Yeah, well, not affordable housing, like new home buyers is not technically affordable housing, anyway. So, you're talking about kind of availability at different price points? Yes, yes. Gotcha. Yes. Was much longer since. Yes. All incomes.
Yes, every time.
All right.
Well, that is my top priority as well, and he stole it, so...
Moving on.
We're gonna move on, and, um, as one of several representatives of Dallas County, um, up here, um, I would say the lack of retail restaurant services in Dallas County.
Okay, so kind of west side in particular?
Yes, and further west, to be particular.
Gotcha. Lack of retail in Dallas County, okay. All right.
Revitalization of the downtown area.
Revitalization of the downtown, straightforward. And, let me give Daniel a break here, how would you define downtown?
Uh, roughly Seventy-second to... East part of Urbendale and Douglas to Seventy-second.
Okay. We've heard different kind of versions of that, so I'm always curious.
Or maybe probably Seventy-fifth, probably, I think, I mean, Seventy-third.
Close enough.
Seventy-three-fifty. Similar to that, lack of identity in Dallas County due to walkie schools out west. People think they're in walkie and they live in Urbendale.
Okay, so, lack of...
Lack of identity out west.
Out west. Yeah, you've got six school districts, so that definitely has a tug and pull on your, your identity, right?
If I could just piggyback on that, I think, I mean, it is, no... No, but no, but, no, I think it, I mean, it is definitely out west, but I think the bigger issue is all of... I think we see it the most there, but it's all of the school districts.
Are you fine with us augmenting and say, community identity, like, lack of community identity due to school districts? Is that, is that okay?
I mean, I think that is particularly...
That's exactly what I had, so go for it.
Flash, related to school districts, there we go.
It's often tied to school districts.
Fair enough, yeah.
Sorry.
Do we need to vote on that edit? I don't know how this works, are we ready?
Thank you, Jeff.
Do I get a second? Okay.
Pretty much mine have been taken, I mean, I had like, there's a lack of unified vision, the growth in the western edge at the experience of some neighborhoods in decline, more central, and we don't have a central-focused town. Lack of focus.
Okay. So, kind of related to identity, but also related to just kind of having development focus, okay?
Urbendale's a great place, but it's, what is it? Uh, cause we don't have a downtown, uh, we don't have a unified, focused.
Gotcha, all right.
That's good enough.
Yeah, all right.
All my stuff's been, like, say, identified one way or another, like, say, either east versus west, you know, the central downtown, you know, we don't have a, sorry, Jordan Creek area, we don't have a outlets of Altoona, a downtown Des Moines, it's just... There's no, like, see, center, center-city focus where events always happen, or that, like, say, that identity, really.
Okay. All right, so, so you're saying you're good, though, in general? Like, like, you think you're, with the list, do you think you're covered?
Yeah, I mean, I had three items, and they've all been...
That's fair enough, right?
Taken care of.
All of my first five have also been covered, but I'd also add, um, we need to start planning for a fire station in old Urbendale.
In what part of Urbendale?
In old, uh, eastern Urbendale, older Urbendale.
Old Urbendale, all right. Plan for fire station?
Classic. Classic Urbendale, seasoned Urbendale, how...
The chamber was out a few years ago, so...
My neighborhood.
Yeah, classic Urbendale.
All right, we'll put "classic" in quotes there, classic Urbendale, right?
Um, mine would be related to economic development, particularly filling in some of the spaces that kind of left behind for the interstate corridor in particular, where we've got a lot of, of potential commercial development. And, and also along Meredith Drive, it's almost like the Sahara Desert, when you get, start going west, that suddenly there's no development for hundreds of acres, it'd be great to fill in.
So, kind of unrealized development potential along the, the urban loop and, and Meredith? Okay, okay.
I'm all covered.
I'll, I'll have you go first next time, so...
No, no.
Uh, for me, the Grimes de-annexation/annexation issue. I think that kind of plays to what you're talking about, but, yeah. When did, when was that initial agreement with EJ, twenty-five years ago, when we still haven't de-annexed the ground from Grimes and back into Urbendale? So, it's kind of preventing some development from happening.
Just that kind of that finger, the grime of Grimes comes down, that what we call the whale town?
What allows you to, so the Grimes de-annexation, Urbendale annexation, so...
Got that?
Yes, no, we're not going there.
All right, can you read his list, please?
I think he's covered.
Oh, I, yeah, the only thing I had that wasn't explicitly stated was east-west divide, but we kind of covered it with other things, so it's, it's good.
I mean, I, we have, and we haven't, though, 'cause I feel like we've heard that, but we've only heard it about kind of, I guess, identity in general, but, I mean, is it an east-west identity in particular?
Yeah, well, our, yeah, 'cause our business section splits Urbendale right in half, and it's basically anything east of that business district is the east side and west. They, they feel like they're two completely different towns sometimes.
Okay. We can, what's that? East versus west, yeah, we can, we can add that. Good? Yeah, I think most of mine were covered in some fashions. Okay.
Um, well, I explicitly said lack of retail restaurant services in Dallas County. So, again, that's kind of all encompassing in some of these, um...
Isn't that number one? Yeah.
Did I say that?
Yeah, that was what you said.
No, I, oh, oh, cause you already took mine, oh dang, I didn't mark it down. Well, this will be a controversial hot take of mine, um, too much flex space, um, sorry. And, uh, we need to focus more on, um, like, services for our community, um, retail restaurants, those sorts of things. I think we have... I think we have too much.
So the warehousing logistics to flex space versus retail and services, okay?
Yes, yes, that is brilliant, diversification of.
Our commercial base?
Our commercial base.
Alright, thank you.
I see your face, Curtis, sorry.
Just trying to.
Transportation infrastructure slash complete streets issues, we've started on that, but I think there's some hole behind it. Focusing on that as well as we're looking at our.
So transportation slash complete streets, kind of momentum, okay?
Bridgette and I are on the same page, higher end retail and restaurants and higher end apartments. I don't think, I, I know we're getting some apartments on the sixth street, but we haven't really focused on high-end apartments throughout the city to bring in younger people and kind of diversify the base.
Okay, so higher end retail slash higher end apartments.
Someone kinda touched upon it, but any kind of lack of entertainment district?
So lack of a entertainment district, okay, alright, sixteen, lack of an entertainment district.
Nothing else here.
Daniel has excellent handwriting, but number ten, if you could add on there, the interstate corridor as well, not just on Meredith.
Oh, you, you are correct. Can I just say, like Urban Loop?
Yeah, Urban Loop, yeah, for sure. And another issue is, uh, that's facing us is annexation issues. North and west, obviously. What sort of decisions we need to make regarding that, what sort of infrastructure we need to push? Sometimes I see other communities leading with infrastructure, we have a tendency not to do that, should we be doing that?
So kind of the need for an annexation and infrastructure.
Is there a need?
Kind of plan?
Is there a need, the first, first question?
Okay, so, trying to, I mean, so you don't know if there is a need for a plan? You said that.
I may have a personal feeling about it, but.
Well, that's, I mean, it's true.
Yeah, it's my time, huh?
Alright, yeah.
Sure, yeah, I, I think we should be looking out west and making decisions regarding annexation, and then once again, how far do we push the infrastructure? Is that, like I said, when I look at some other communities, I see infrastructure with barren land, we have a tendency not to do that. Now here's the question, should we be doing that? Should we be leading with infrastructure, or should we wait?
Alright, so a need for infrastructure and, uh, or sorry, a need for annexation and infrastructure plan? Okay. And yes, the conference, I mean, that's one of the core things a conference plan needs to do is address land use involvement, including kind of where and how you should grow, so that's definitely something we'll be looking to. Still good? Going once.
I thought I was good, till Wayne brought it up. Where's our final boundaries?
Does that go with the annexation plan?
Yeah, and that's why, is it add to that, or whether it is, but where is that?
Is this on your list?
It wasn't, it's an added after the conversation, so.
So we need to define that, that edge, yeah.
Right, and where's the, yeah, the final edge, basically, we'll stop growing somewhere.
Yeah, gotcha, alright. All good?
This is just super easy, just um, we, we say uniquely Urbain Dale, what makes us unique and figuring that out?
Define what makes Urbain Dale unique. That's what you, that's what you need to do though, right? That's the, the issue? Yeah.
Uh, West Des Moines has Jordan Creek and, and Valley Junction, and then uh, Ankeny has a million apartments and the district and nice houses around the district, blah, blah. What, what's our unique Urbain Dale, and that we could do different in the next ten years that would draw people, keep people in Urbain Dale, but draw people from outside?
Good?
On that note, I think we should add, so we don't forget, our parks, and because that is a piece that makes Urbain Dale unique.
Okay, is that, is that an issue or concern, or should we just?
No, it's more of a, let's continue to grow and keep the focus on and not forget them in the process.
Okay, alright, so, uh, continue to. I don't know, I guess I don't know how to say that, continue to maintain.
Foster, maintain.
Quality parks network, alright. And our last question is about assets, we'll definitely come back to that too, but, alright, so now what we're gonna do, cause I think everyone said they're good, correct? Oh, you got one more, okay.
We have to do all nineteen of these things, but yet still maintain a competitive tax rate.
Alright, so twenty, maintain competitive tax rate. Do you have any more? Now you're good, okay, so maintain competitive tax rate, alright, thank you, Daniel. So now what we're gonna do is move on to question two, and this is based on these twenty items. List in order importance, the three most important issues discussed thus far. So kind of rank these, you don't need to write down the whole phrase, just rank, write down the number of the item you think is kind of top priority, one, two, and three in your mind. And again, if there's any that are related to each one another, pick the one that's kind of most resonates with you as being the key issue. But we've got twenty items here, you're welcome to come up and look if you need to, but just write down three numbers under item two. Let me know if there's any you need me to read.
We're walking out.
Can't tell if everyone's thinking or if they're done. Yeah, pick, pick the ones that most resonate, if we see themes, we'll, we'll definitely be able to summarize that later, but the ones you would, if you had to, which you prioritize. Give me a thumbs up if you're done. Okay, alright, so, uh, what we're gonna do now is just, we're gonna call it a number and, and raise your hand if it's in your top three. It doesn't have to be your number one, or your number two, or number three, just in your top three, and we'll go down the list, and this will give us kind of a, an aggregate kind of ranking of these twenty items, so. Number one, commercial and residential valuation split, who had this as one of your top three, raise your hand. You got three. Alright, number two, stormwater slash sewer management. Affordable housing for all incomes. Five. Four, lack of retail services and entertainment in Dallas County.
I'd expand it just through the whole city, but Dallas County especially.
Alright, so we'll say four, alright. Alright, did we skip five? Skip five, well done guys. Zero. Number six, revitalize downtown.
We even did, did we decide what downtown is, I mean, should that be part of it, is to identify what constitutes downtown and then revitalize it?
I think when it was said, it was kind of the, the very eastern end towards Merle Hay to seventy eighth, is that where you landed?
It's a bigger problem if we can't even articulate what it is.
Merle Hay to seventy fifth.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so revitalize downtown, one, two. Four. Number seven, lack of identity in the west slash related to school districts, so it was particularly bad in the west, but it's a general issue. One. Lack of a central focus. One. Nine, plan for a station, uh, fire station in the east, classic vintage part of town. Alright, zero, so this is the first year we've had, I mean, just cause it didn't get votes doesn't mean we won't look into this issue, obviously we're looking into public safety facilities and kind of where they're needed. But across the board, you know, I think these are all things that we'll definitely be examining, and this ranking is really gonna help us, I think, just make sure we're prioritizing some areas more than others. Number ten, unrealized development potential on Meredith slash the urban loop. So we got a lot of great development sites, shovel-ready, infrastructure in the ground. Three. Alright, I gotta go this way now. Number eleven, uh, the Grimes de-annexation slash Urbain Dale annexation issue, the whale tail, this is phrased. Zero? Alright, twelve, east versus west, also related identity, we've got more stuff of east-west. One, yeah?
More community, yeah.
Alright.
Sure.
Alright, one, alright. We're from Chicago, so it's rarely, but often, you guys are close enough, it's fine. Thirteen, diversification of commercial base. And it was kind of also in that comment, it was talking about kind of the need to shift a little bit from industrial and flex space, right, two. Fourteen, transportation slash complete streets momentum, kind of needing to kind of maintain that momentum and catch up a little. Alright, zero. Fifteen, higher end retail and apartments, I think specifically targeting kind of young professionals in that market, alright. Sixteen, lack of entertainment district, kind of goes to the lack of focus comment earlier, right, so, three. Alright, seventeen. The need for an annexation infrastructure plan, well, what's our kind of boundary, what's our end game here? Two. Eighteen, define what makes Urbain Dale unique, what's, what are those things we can build upon?
That's more my east versus west.
Alright, four. Alright, nineteen, continue to maintain quality parks and trails, again, it's a key asset, maybe something you can build on. Alright. And twenty, maintain competitive tax rate, so with all this in the works, you gotta maintain that as a goal too. Alright, zero. Okay, so we ended up with twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-three, how many of you, how honest were we? Pretty good, guys. We were right on there, actually, well done. I gotta move to Iowa, you guys are way more trustworthy than Chicago. So we could see some, I mean, definitely the areas overlap, I mean, I think we've agreed, the identity thing has kind of bled into a lot of aspects of the conversation today. Affordable housing, affordable housing for all incomes was number one in terms of just sheer vote count at five, and, and I think distinct from other issues as well. Define what makes Urbain Dale unique goes with identity in the, in the west, goes with the east-west divide. Lack of an entertainment district and, and lack of a, a central focus are somewhat related with four. Revitalize the downtown had four, um, and then the services and kind of lack of retail options, again, recognized as a general issue, but particularly um, in the west side. Uh, and then the unrealized development potential, that you've, you've got some great assets ready to go in the urban loop and Meredith areas. So we'll be taking this along with what we heard from staff, along with what we're hearing throughout this, this trip, uh, and really using it to, like I said, kind of hone our analysis. So as we're going through and documenting existing conditions and, and looking at what data sources to pull, um, this will really help guide our efforts a bit and, and make sure we're spending our time wisely. Uh, and it'll also definitely be informing kind of what we choose to prioritize as we frame kind of the, the draft plan and those vision statements out in, in a, in a few months here, so. With that said, those are the kind of the key issues. And, and what we want to do now is kind of shift gears and, and start looking towards the future. What are, what are some potential projects or actions, uh, you'd like to see undertaken in Urbain Dale, um, to potentially address some of these issues? Could be something completely out of left field that we haven't talked about, like you, you've wanted a water park for twenty years, it's gonna happen, let's get that on the list, so. Question three, identify, no?
Were you just pulling that out of the air, or?
I was, is that bad? Roller coaster in the last meeting, I should've gone with that one, huh? Alright, we'll say roller coaster. Don't say water park right that time. So question three, identify three specific projects or actions you would like to see undertaken in Urbain Dale. Again, it could be related to this list, it could be just some pet project you've had in mind for a long time, you want to see something happen there. But just take a couple minutes and, and think about some real measurable, specific things that could be done, uh, here in Urbain Dale. If you're mayor for the day and a huge grant falls out of the sky, what would you do kind of the next morning to, to make something happen? Or you can abstain if you need to. Alright, now, this isn't, it's quite as scientific, we're just gonna kind of go around the horn and each, each person can throw out one, one project or action. And Daniel, write that down, um, again, if you have lots of projects you want to put out there, that's great, if you want to just give us one and leave the rest on your page, we can summarize those later, so. And I, I'll start on this end this time.
Action I would take, an action plan to develop affordable housing for goals, objective, units, locations, income, targets, et cetera. Action I would take, an action plan to develop affordable housing for goals, objective, units, locations, income, targets, et cetera. Thoroughly vet what that looks like, where they should be, and of identify funding mechanisms to get there. Which is made really hard right now.
Yeah.
Rising interest rates and construction costs.
So a housing action plan is kind of the, the key deliverable there. And you said affordable housing. Do you mean like actual like subsidized housing or you just mean kind of housing at price points?
Affordable workforce.
Okay. Alright.
Healthiest neighborhoods or diverse neighborhoods.
Alright.
Get ahead of the potential for, for far western development. Or even any of the, the development that I mentioned before on Meredith in particular, or possible annexation land. To try and encourage development, maybe paint some pictures of what it could be. Around Seventieth Street to the north. What, what potential developments could go in there? What we're looking for? I guess I'm, I'm really looking forward at that annexation possibility. And to paint a picture of what far west Urbendale could look like before we have hodgepodge developments of the various landowners with their, I'd like to see Urbendale have a dream for far west.
So kind, kind of a cohesive annexation plan? With, do you want to see, like development concepts, kind of?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Alright. Okay, jump in. I'll have a beer later, it's fine.
I would say space for locally owned restaurants and businesses out west, but also throughout the city.
So space for locally owned businesses, emphasis on local, okay. And when you said out west, do you mean like you need to find kind of an area to really dedicate to that?
Uh, Dallas County, Western Urbendale, but, but honestly throughout our entire city.
Okay.
It's just really lacking out west.
Well, we talked about the kind of revitalization of the, you know, the downtown area, let's say from Merle Hay over to Seventy Second, you know, maybe we, that's just reclassified. As kind of like how West Des Moines has valleys, like Jeff said, Valley Junction, where it's kind of the older part of town, but still has, you know, some uniqueness to it, some, some character to it, you know, maybe that fits for that area where we have a main entertainment district that fits somewhere out west where there's more space to develop. Newer, bigger area.
So you're saying kind of almost like rebranding the downtown a bit? Okay. So like in terms of the what development actually happens there or just the kind of the, like how you define it and what everyone kind of, how we market it?
Yeah, probably more of a marketing maybe.
Okay. Yeah, everyone has it, everyone has it downtown.
There's Jordan Creek, which is the main new big area, but then there's the Valley Junction, which is the quaint, quiet.
Right. Okay.
Has more of the local shops in it.
Right, more local owned businesses, small, small business.
Yeah. Alright.
Develop a vision for an entertainment district in some of the land that we already have. We already talked about the urban loop. Area that gets a lot, high, high visibility through traffic. We have this wonderful high volume visible area that we put storage areas in. So we, we revitalize with something that if you have an, it's like Waquis did, right off of, um, the interstate, they put their entertainment district right there. Inside of a bunch of storage warehouses. So take the land that we have and create a vision for, if we want an entertainment district, create a vision for it.
Alright, so.
Build it and they will come.
Entertainment district vision. Okay.
We've got land.
I'm gonna podium on what Judy said and say have a vision for entertainment, restaurants, retail, condos, apartments, and maybe even explore TIF. And I haven't been a big fan of TIF, but if we really want it, if we really want office space along the interstate, maybe we discuss five years of no tax or whatever, but if we want to have this, so, so, uh, for his edification, high-rise condos, apartments, entertainment, explore TIF.
Okay.
If we vision it, let's make it happen and, and throw money at it.
That's how Waquis did it.
So the kind of the entertainment district.
Aggressive TIF.
You're thinking like the Plaza in Kansas City type thing?
I don't, I mean, it's Urbendale, so. Well, okay, so I'll, I'll do this real briefly. We've been kind of schooled for twenty-some years on planning and zoning that every two miles, there should be a little shopping center and a grocery store. And then there should be in, there should be infill with residential. And Waquis blew that apart. Waquis has three miles of restaurants and retail, just going strong. And so maybe we can envision something that's like that, and if we have to TIF for it or, or be more unique or do something different as a city, we envision our Urbendale two-mile loop of cool restaurants and fountains and stuff that is Kansas City light. It's Urbendale sized. We were schooled for years that it was every two, two miles, that's where we're gonna have our retail district, and, and Waquis took all of that out west and probably took some of our restaurants and retail with it. From Western Urbendale.
Are you, I mean, so is what you're saying kind of dovetailing with that, but more than just entertainment, you're saying also fold in kind of the?
And, and explore TIF. I would just say explore economic incentives.
Explore incentives.
And, and I know there are people in this room that say, oh, we can't do that. Short-term, do something to incentivize it and not just say, if you leave that land and, along the interstate and, and zone it for office, they will come because they haven't. Some have. I'm not, I'm not denigrating the economic efforts, but they haven't come full swing, and so let's throw money at it or effort. More money. Alright, I'll go twenty years. I don't know. I don't know, they're not coming.
Alright. So say such as like like TIF, just to make sure that's in there.
I, mine are pretty well covered so far.
Okay.
Still thinking about the three, top three I have, we're all kind of in these six that we already have here.
Great, alright.
Well, I absolutely love this discussion because I think we need to start being crazy, like, you know, talking about. Like Jeff, I mean, wearing shorts when it's forty degrees out. No, I mean, I served with all these folks on the Plan Zoning Commission, you know, before I came on the council, and I agree, I mean, we, we need to start getting crazy, right Steve? So I love all these ideas, I mean, my first job was working with Jackie, and so she took the words out of my mouth about affordable housing. But, so I will say, um, the one that I have left is investing in supporting social and human services as we continue to grow and become a more diverse and welcoming community.
Yeah, and so that should go part and parcel with your retail growth and all that stuff. You need to have the services to go with that too.
But having the city be engaged and party to that process. You know, much like the economic development, you know, getting in the game, I think we also need to get in the human services game because eventually we have to when we hit, you know, a certain threshold and, which is gonna happen probably in the next census.
Who's providing the services right now if the city's not playing a heavy role?
Um, and we're, we're funding or partially, you know, funding our, our UCAN, which provides some human services, our food pantry. You know, we give, I think, pretty decent amounts of money to those organizations, but I, I just think we need to have a better focus and, or start focusing on those issues because they're coming for us and we need to be ready.
Fair enough, yeah.
So a lot of mine has been said, uh, but I'll just kind of build off of the two that I think are, have been talked about and from an aggressiveness perspective. I think when it comes to the redevelopment of the downtown, not just a branding, but even a city getting in and stepping in and purchasing of land and working with developers, and aggressiveness on our part to put money where our mouth is when it comes to doing that. So that's one pivot on that end. And when it comes to a district and entertainment area, unfortunately, when it goes out west, I think Waquis is kind of gobbling that up. We have Ankeny in one corner, this corner, I think a strategic pivot towards Grimes and Johnston, working that way because there is a lack of cohesive entertainment over in that corner with similar population trends. So looking at maybe a district entertainment on like a hundredth would be something that would be able to capture that kind of strategic positioning that, and so those are the types of things that I would look at. Again, it's broadly covered in other things. I just want to be more aggressive with and specific with.
Well, and I mean, I think that the downtown piece in particular is, I mean, the, the city taking an active role in like site assembly and things like that, that is aggressive, and so, yeah, if this group wants to be on board, that kind of approach, I mean, it's great to have that idea out there now because that's something we need to look into as part of this process, so.
Uh, yeah, I just, to kind of build on that, because we talked about how Hickman has basically a three-mile stretch on, in Waquis of just nothing but business, and we kind of missed our opportunity for that. So if we can, if we can, Matt's point, find another opportunity for us to kind of create our own district, that's, that's something that we need to do, and, you know, fertile housing was another one of mine. Uh, the other thing is, you know, you, you kind of triggered something with me when you said, you know, just pile money, drops down in front of you, what would you do? One of the things that I, that these guys have hurt me beat it to death, I've been part of the, uh, Citizens Police Academy and going into their building, it's, it's run down. I mean, we're, our, unfortunately, our, our female officers don't have the, the changing space that they need to be able to do what they need to do at work, and it's just, our, our building is completely outdated, so I, I would love to see a, a new police department. We've just built a new fire department out west. We're looking at building a new fire department on the east side for the, uh, to replace forty-one. But I think our, our police department is something that's sorely in need of some updating.
Department or station?
The entire station, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, not, not department, station.
Different meanings to me.
Either new or expanding what you've got, like just you need more space and better.
Yeah, I need space, you know.
Upgraded facilities.
I went, I went out to Altuna's facility, not granted, they got, they got money from some other places out there. That Prairie Meadows money, but, uh, you know, they, what they have is just state-of-the-art. It's absolutely gorgeous, but, and then you go to ours and it's, you can see the age. Fortunately.
Alright.
I'm good. They're all up there.
Any other projects or things people want to just throw out there to the group before we move on?
The one that I have is, um, you know, related to this creating an identity and, um, you know, we have to have reasons for people in the western part of the community to come to the eastern part of the community, and reasons for the people in the eastern part of the community to come to the west. And I think if we're successful in doing all of these things, we'll get that cross play that we need, but the word that I really like that we're talking about is being aggressive, because I think collectively Urbendale has not been aggressive in doing, um, development or economic development, and I'd like to see us get more aggressive like you, Matt, talked about.
It doesn't necessarily have to be a negative, because aggressive has kind of a negative connotation sometimes.
No, I just want to see us proactive, just kind of getting in, you know, getting in the game, you know. Obviously, I've already made it clear that affordable housing is a huge priority for me, but, you know, for Urbendale to like actively acquire a parcel for affordable housing would be beyond anything it's ever done. So to me, that's being aggressive or proactive.
Absolutely, okay.
And that's, I want to see us doing things like that, whether it be for affordable housing or for entertainment or for whatever reason, but just getting and, you know, creating the plans to show what we want at, you know, a hundred and eighty-seventh and Waterford Road or, you know, whatever, is, you know, just, just being more in charge of our own destiny instead of letting it happen.
So an aggressive slash proactive like mindset?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
I would, I would also add, we need to up our public art game, because I think that can tie into our identity as well.
And you do have, you've got the one percent in your, your capital projects, right? Which is great, but you want to see kind of beyond that, what, what do you say up your game? What do you mean?
Murals, um, community engagement and public art. Um, I mean, it can look, it can take a lot of different avenues. We have a public arts committee, but I think when you focus in on art, it's a way to bring in a different subset of population. And you can also start to see diversity of your residents reflected in the, in the community in a more tangible sort of way.
Expand public art programming.
I think it could be as simple as like our, that new Starbucks that's on one Forty-second, just putting a mural of Urbendale.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it doesn't have to be high dollar.
Or it's the, the, the fresh one. That's a Starbucks.
Any other projects you want to throw out there?
Give me a more com- comprehensive look at the bike trail system through Urbendale.
Alright, other, so just kind of.
Bike trails, give them a good look at them.
Okay.
Be what Iowa seems to be getting known for, our bike trails. All those wonderful bike trails taken through Urbendale, and is there, are there things along the way?
Okay. So a comprehensive bike trail plan, okay. I know your parks master plan is redone just a few years ago, so I imagine there's components of that in there, but, yeah. Alright, so we'll move on. Last question. We spent a lot of time talking about issues, a lot of time, kind of what we want to work on, what we want to fix. But as we're talking about making these changes, improving the community, um, we also want to make sure we're, we're kind of keeping what you guys like about this. There's a reason you guys live here. There's a reason people are coming here. So as we talk about change, um, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater, right? What, what should we be kind of building on, uh, as part of this comprehensive plan? So for question four, um, and we won't write these down, we can just kind of, we'll, we'll use your notes to, to get at this, but what are the primary strengths and assets of Urbendale? So just take a minute and jot some down and we'll, we'll go around the horn again.
Got to hold on.
Who wants to throw something out there?
I'll throw, the big reason why I moved here in the first place is just has a very small town feel, but access to basically everything. It's very community driven.
Yeah.
So that's, I'd say that's me, the biggest strength of Urbendale.
Small town feel, but kind of big, big city kind of access and amenities.
Our parks and trails are, are very good. There's always room for improvement, but I think we, we value our outdoor recreation.
I mean, fifty-plus miles of trails, that's pretty impressive. I know you, you touched on that earlier too, so.
Have growth and then growing diversity too, because we have an older housing stock that's bringing in different populations, so we have, we have continued growth and we still have that older of part of the town that has bring in new types of individuals as well.
And kind of naturally affordable kind of areas of town, yeah.
World-class businesses of all, in all respects. I think we've uncovered a lot of businesses that are each leaders in their respective fields that are right here in Urbendale.
And the potential to get more because of the, the, the great growth you have on, on the western, or the, the urban loop.
Neighbors knowing each other. Actually know who lives next to you and around you and the community that's built inside the neighborhoods because of it. It's not always common.
Yeah, kind of getting to that small town kind of feel to it, even though you guys are pretty big these days, still have that, the connection, that's great.
I think we have great schools. We have a lot of choices. But they're all, um, you know, they're all very good, but yet, I mean, depending on, you know, what you're looking for in a district, you can live in Urbendale and find the district. You know, so I think we have, um, all the best districts in Urbendale. And private schools as well, so, um, I think that is something to bring people definitely to Urbendale is our schools.
And the smallest school district in the metro. And the smallest school district in the metro.
And the largest.
And the largest, yeah, that's true.
Well, and the largest, we've got that little-
Define smallest, though.
Urbendale, the smallest, well-
Geographically.
Yeah, geograph, yeah, okay.
I think the citizens of Urbendale really love their community, they're very loyal to their community, have a lot of pride in their community. I think if people are thinking about moving up or moving down in terms of housing, they make a real concerted effort if they're an Urbendale citizen to find another Urbendale home.
Yeah, someone, uh, earlier staff mentioned that, I mean, the turnout you guys have at community events is amazing, you're like, the, you have several great, kind of, people show up here, yeah.
I'd say we have the top-tier public staff and first responders, like, I, I wouldn't trade anyone on our staff for anyone else's.
Right?
Yeah, I didn't leave you out, AJ, I got you.
I think we have an incredible library.
Yeah.
And, um, I feel like the momentum there is really, really positive. I mean, it's always been a good library system, but we have a lot of new staff there that's really, that's being proactive and aggressive, like, you know, and trying new programming, and, um, I'm really excited about, about what's happening there.
That's great.
I think we're in a solid financial position as well to leverage ourselves to maybe being, uh, tackling some of these issues and being a little bit more responsive to what we want to do in this community.
Yeah, I mean, despite having that balance, right, the commercial and residential, you, it seems like you're, you're doing, the services you're delivering are being delivered very well, and, and you're, yeah, fiscally, you're, you're sound, as, from what we've been told, so, yeah.
So, your question was what's the primary strengths and assets, and I would say one of them is that historically, we've had a very classic planning model that says, uh, retail, apartments, townhomes, small houses, big houses, um, and people understand that if they have a open space next to them, it's going to be zoned correctly. But one of our big assets is we have a lot of land out west, and maybe we can blow that model up and make it even bigger and better. Maybe we can be more grandiose with the planning, and I don't know what that means, but, you know, whether it's Kansas City light, Urbendale heavy, but, um, you know, maybe we actually have high-rise condos and high-rise apartments in areas that are designated, you know, West Des Moines has them right by Des Moines Gulf and Country Club, you know, something bigger, better, better, try something different. But we have a lot of land to experiment and do bigger things.
And you branded it "the heavy," I like it, that's cool. You've got some, some momentum there.
You can use all those words if you want. Wanted to know, wanted that people know that our, uh, city manager is frugal enough that he will drive backwards to reduce miles on his car, and so we, that's how we save our pennies around here.
Let's say like eighty thirty-fives always kind of had this, maybe a negative notation with dividing the city in half, but it's also kind of an asset as far as access, ease of access. I mean, for people that live in Urbendale, like, one of the reasons I chose, it's like so easy to get on the interstate, get to where you need to, whether I'm going up to work for Johnston, or going out west, I think for bringing other people from other communities to Urbendale, it makes, makes sense, you know, if you can turn maybe a negative into, you know, the best feature, or, not the best feature, but one of the top, top assets. You've got seven interchanges, and, and the position in the region's really quality, yeah? All right, so we're gonna, um, wrap up with just a real quick discussion of next steps. So, we've kind of reviewed a little bit of this already in terms of the scope and, and where we're headed, um, but, um, we have got a community vision workshop, uh, um, tomorrow night, um, uh, we'll have a downtown kind of business workshop, uh, in the morning, um, on Friday. We've had a series of keepers' interviews and focus groups slotted for today and tomorrow, and a little bit of Friday as well. Got this workshop, so we're doing a lot of kind of upfront, in-person engagement to inform things, uh, combining that with our existing conditions analysis, like I said. And so, over the next few months, we'll be, uh, summarizing everything and compiling that report for you. So, the next time we meet, we'll be to review kind of the findings from, from this visit and that, that analysis. With that said, we also have some online engagement tools. If you go to urbendale.org/compplan, you can get to our online questionnaire, and you can get to map.social, which is a fun kind of mapping application, you can, you can create your own map of what you want to see, uh, happen here in Urbendale. So, uh, a challenge for you guys is, is to, A, complete the questionnaire, map.social yourself, and then B, spread the word and get five other people to do it. Uh, we're trying to get as much momentum going on the website as we can, so please help us out and, and spread the word about this process. Uh, when you go to the website, this will kind of be what, what it looks like, um, we've got an area where you can learn about the plan, news and updates, I, announcements about how to get involved in upcoming workshops, um, this is a kind of a, the first page of that, that resident questionnaire, um, takes about ten minutes. Um, there's also some, some questionnaire logic, so if you're a business or property owner, you get some additional questions to answer as well. And then, this is the, the landing page from app.social, um, you can kind of zoom in, pan, uh, look at any area of Urbendale you want to, and we've got a customized legend that lets you drop points on a map and basically add a title, add a description, and let us know, um, kind of issues you see, opportunities you see, where you want to see those bike trail connections, uh, development opportunities that you want to highlight using a polygon feature, um, so, uh, fun way to, to put some, some place-based input out there, and other people can also view it, um, and, and vote on it if they want to. But, um, between that and the questionnaire, we're hoping to get some really good momentum going over the next, uh, month. I think we'll, we'll be kind of leaving it open for about two months, and then we'll, we'll kind of call it good and pull down information. To summarize, with that said, uh, depending on what everyone wants to do, we could leave it open throughout the process to see whether additional input we get, but we'll be kind of drawing a, a line in the sand to, to do the summaries that we need to do for the existing conditions report in a couple of months, so. So, questions or comments about kind of everything and everything we talked about?
Just from my information, when was the last time the comprehensive plan was created? When was the comprehensive, existing comprehensive plan?
Two thousand and three, correct?
Two thousand and three.
So, just curious, anyone that was part of that, were these things on the wall then? Okay, good, that's a good sign. Nothing was strategic kind of go, "Oh, yeah, we talked about that ten years ago, we still didn't do it." So, this is all new material, that's a, that's a great.
Were you involved, Jeff?
Yeah, we were. Yeah, we were involved, it was, um, it was-
Less of a process than this, it was just, that consultant came in and had some ideas, and we had a few ideas, and then it was put into a binder, and we didn't talk about it much. But I was nine back then, so you know, it's, they pulled me out of, you know, junior high or whatever. I still had gray hair. Can I add one stupid thing, that this is, uh, sacred cow? It's, it didn't really fit nicely into the box, but it's something for future councils to think about. Living History Farms has shown some, uh, willingness to sell land in the past to boost their, boost their reserves. I think it would be thoughtful and aggressive if we thought about some residential on the north side, Douglas Parkway, around to a hundred and twenty-eighth, maybe zone it, they're all housing, had to be a nineteen twenties feel, but it's, it's a border that looks really bad, if you don't, if you're coming in, it's just kind of scraggly land, doesn't look good, bad fence, bad gravel roads, and if you zoned it and said they could make a couple of million bucks, and also we would get a hundred homes out of that deal from, you know, from the interstate all the way back around to a hundred and twenty-eighth, and one acre in, and, uh, Living History Farms would say the homes that are there would not have anything built behind them for ten years or something like that, whatever, but it would be a nice boundary around the north end of Living History Farms, it, they would receive some money if they wanted it, and we would have nicer amenities and, and a nice statue on the corner, or a nice little restaurant on the corner of a hundred and twenty-eighth and Douglas. I don't know.
They just opened it up to their dinner restaurant all the time? I would add about twenty pounds.
But anyway, I just, the, the northern end and around a hundred and twenty-eighth, if, if Living History Farms wanted money for their endowment, and we were aggressive to say, "We want housing," or whatever, and it would have, like I said, nineteen, had to have to have a nineteen twenties feel, or whatever the council decided to make that feel good, a farm feel to it, and a statue on the corner, or a fountain. Buffalo, I don't care, but anyway, something to, it, it didn't fit nicely into any of those boxes, but I think it's something that Living History Farms would want the money, and we wouldn't intrude into their farm very far, but we would get housing stock and something attractive on that part of town.
Yeah, and that's definitely something we can look into as part of this process, you know, is there a conservation easement in place for the, that, I don't know, even if there is, where the boundaries?
Well, they own all that land, and it's all nonprofit, and so there's no taxes, but it would be nice to derive some taxes and also have a really nice border, and maybe put low-income housing in there, I don't know, but it would be a nineteen twenties farm feel all the way around, and it would border their north end well. So, anyway, something to think about.
Good thought, Jeff.
I thought you were gonna bring up your, uh, lifetime development area.
No comment. Good.
Yeah, what's the engagement been like so far with the website? Because I saw it out there, I don't know, like a week ago, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it only went live, um, a couple of weeks ago, so, I mean, this trip's kind of the big push for us to get the online traction, so I mean, we're, we're really pushing the workshop that's happening tomorrow night, and as part of that, we're trying to get people aware of the website and participate in that way, too, so, um, I don't know how many surveys we have yet, um, I could find out pretty quickly, but I don't have that.
So, if someone wouldn't be able to attend tomorrow night, their next best thing would be to take the-
Do the questionnaire and do map.social, yeah. Yeah, tomorrow night's exercise is a mapping exercise, so if they want to do the map-social thing, it would kind of parallel with it, yeah.
Again, only because I do this at work, and, so it's, it's, it's visiting, as part of your review, will you look at the two thousand and three comprehensive plan to see how well we did in accomplishing what was set out there? Because it sounds like maybe it was a great binder and put on the, I just don't want to go through all this work and have it be put on the shelf again.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would go through that former one to say, "Yep, did that, did that, oh, we should have done that," or, "Didn't do that, didn't do that for good reasons," just to keep us honest as we go through this process?
We'll definitely be looking at that, that plan as kind of a, kind of what's done in the past discussion, and then we've already had, started having discussions with staff about kind of things that maybe worked well and haven't been working, the two-mile commercial node concept has been one thing, we've definitely been told that, "Hey, we need to revisit this, does this make sense?" So, yeah, we, we will be working with staff. The, the great thing is you've got continuity and staff here that were, I think, involved or know about what was in that past plan, so we can leverage their input as well to, to figure out kind of what's worth revisiting now, uh, as well.
Good.
Yeah.
No reason to reinvent the wheel, or, let's learn from our-
Exactly, yeah. All right, well, um, thank you very much for your input, I really appreciate it. Hopefully you enjoyed the conversation, but this has been very informative for us, um, and like I said, um, we'll be kind of pulling all this information together, and, and, and we'll be seeing you again in a, in a few months to, to go over everything we learned. All right. Yeah, please, we can, yeah, we'll collect your sheets after, before you leave, but, uh, thank you very much.
All right. Well, that, uh, that, thank you, Brandon, thanks to the Housel Levine team, we're kicking us off, and thanks to everybody showing up tonight and providing input. This is, this is truly valuable part of the process, so, uh, appreciate everybody's input and, and, uh, and willingness to, to get some ideas tonight, so, we're gonna, this is gonna be a good exercise, I think, once we get down, so. All right, we are adjourned, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't move.
I, sometimes I can just declare.
Let me know what you want to see done.
Okay.